Okay, ordinances. Mr. Clerk.
Hi, I'm Wayne. We have ordinance, proposed amendment to the 2013 budget Assistant Police Commissioner positions.
This was discussed by the City Council in executive session last week. City Manager, anything you want to say with regard to other side and before we act on it? And Police Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief overview and then open up for questions. Back in August, this was our proposed reorganization in the Police Department. We had several steps along the way to put this into place. One would be to have the Civil Service Commission create the positions that were being recommended. That was done in October. We have to, this step, and correct me if I'm wrong Kathleen, this step is sort of the first step in a multi-step process of which the city doesn't make the ultimate decision. It's made at the state level. There would be three steps along the way there. This, though, does have to, this, what you'd be doing tonight would be simply establishing the positions in our budget for 2013. If the Council decides to do that, then we would be before the Public Employee Relations Board to have them consider our petition. The package included the city's independent outside labor attorneys, make sure I know what he calls it, what we call it, a rider to our application in support of the fact that the positions, in our view, are management confidential positions and therefore should not be in the collective bargaining unit. The issue of retirement plan is not ours to decide. It's decided by the state retirement system, not the city, much despite all the stuff that's been spewed about. And in a third sense, if they were to be considered exempt positions, that would have to be done by the State Civil Service Commission. That could not be done by the city. So even if the City Council were to put this resolution, adopt it, put it in the budget, PERB, which is the right body to determine whether it's a management confidential position, would then have to consider that application. If the city wins, then we win. If we lose, we lose. And the positions would either be called what they're called and stay in the union or we could call them whatever we want and they'd stay in the union. But that's an issue for the PERB body to determine, and that's why we are submitting an application for it. The other stuff would happen after that. So this is just the first step in a process that the Council has been exposed to since August. Police Commissioner made an initial presentation. And I don't want to add anything to that, Pat, but that's where it is.
We actually were considering this over five years ago. This isn't something new. We discussed this way back when, the idea of taking the captains out of the union because of their positions. There's really, there's only three spots up there. Three captains running three different, very critical units in the department. And if that person is in that position, there's no way to remove them short of major disciplinary charges. There's no flexibility, there's no movement at all. So again, we discussed that with the Civil Service and Personnel many years ago, and we've come to this point now to try and make it happen.
Assuming that the state acts in the way that you recommend, would there be any cost implications for the city?
Well, the first action for the state would be the PERB action. There would be no cost implications involved in that. The second action would be retirement system. And again, that's a state retirement decision. If it were to be, if there were to be a removal from one retirement system to another, although it might be a benefit to the position, whoever's in it, the city's cost would be less because the police pension is 26% of payroll, the ERS is 20%.
What does the ERS stand for?
Employee Retirement System. So there'd be a savings on city costs alone and retirement. But again, that's not our determination to make. That's a determination that would be made by the state retirement system.
And your primary motivation is improving managerial oversight and accountability, as you say?
That's correct, yes.
Questions or comments from Council? Okay, I saw Councilmember Rice and then Councilmember Tarantino.
In terms of precedent, is there any precedent within New York cell, maybe within the Police Department or the Fire Department or anything that...
Of removing positions from the union?
Uh huh.
There's precedent in other departments, I just don't have it off the top of my head. There is also precedent of unions, certain employees in a union decertifying and forming their own union. That's what happened with the deputy fire chiefs, similar situation. I can't remember. We've moved positions in and out of unions before on several occasions. In fact, we did it this year in CSEA, we did it with a couple of positions in the MIS Department, so I don't know that there's precedent.
They were definitely, I don't know if they were in the union. They created the deputy commissioners way back before I got here.
Yeah.
And the idea of getting more accountability. They put three deputy commissioners in and we do some captains in rank.
I think the key, the key thing to focus on is what was put in there in the rider about it being a management confidential position. And in the end, those positions who are overseeing and supervising people within their same union, PERB will make the determination. Perhaps we're wrong, but I don't think so. I think we'd win. I think the SOA probably disagrees, but that's okay. That's the appropriate body to mount the challenge with. PERB is the regulator of MNC positions.
And in terms of decertifying and SOA, the captains, three captains are part of the SOA, is it an alternative for them to create their own union, which would kind of take them out of that and allow that disciplinary process to run more smoothly?
I imagine they could.
They could if they wanted to. They could try that. I'm not sure it would be our choice, but that is certainly something they could try. As I said, I think, I'm not sure, it was before my time, but I believe that's what happened with the deputy fire chiefs.
Well, part of the package here, you know, we're hoping to get the whole package, but the whole package would be the fact that they would not have to take an exam. If they're in the union and they're still doing it, and we may not get that, but we're not sure.
Yeah, I think that is going to be the toughest thing. So it's very possible that the positions would remain competitive and that there would be a test and that we'd have to follow civil service regulations. Again, that's not a decision we'll make. That'll be a decision made by the State Civil Service Commission.
And there's been a lot of talk with respect to retirement age, and that's something that I'm not really clear on right now. I know I've heard 62, 65, 70. Could anybody provide any clarity on how retirement age works? Or is that something that we shouldn't...
I'm not a lawyer, so I can only tell you what the lawyers told me. The 62 in the city charter is taken directly from a section on the local police pension fund. Doesn't exist anymore. There's nobody in the local police pension fund. Maybe some people still receive benefits, but there's no active members in the local, that's before. The state retirement system would determine if there's a mandatory retirement age. My understanding is that there is, there's a, so many different plans that something that reaches a retirement age could switch to other plan, which moves them up to 65. We could get clarification on that. I could bring in the labor attorney, but it's my understanding that there is no mandatory retirement age.
70, I believe.
Well, not 62.
No, not 62.
And lastly, I have been speaking with a lot of different people about this issue the last 72 hours, and there is a lot of opposition to this. And I just don't know, me personally, I'll be honest, I don't know if today is the time to actually move on this. And that's just my gut feeling. There's two sides to this, and I don't know if I quite understand the other side as well.
I don't want to speak for the other side. I think the papers that were provided to Council are clear. I think they clearly demonstrate that the role of these positions are management confidential positions. Ultimately, that's not Council's decision to make. But if the Council chooses not to let the Police Department reorganize, the Police Management reorganize in the method that they see best, I guess that's the Council's choice. I'm not sure it's where we ought to go. PERB will decide whether we're right or wrong. But I believe that's the appropriate forum for this to be heard.
So Councilmember Tarantino, then Councilmember Rackman.
Yeah. The question I have is that, with the existing system that we have in place right now, in your estimation, has it worked out or has it been a problem?
No, it has worked pretty well. I've been here almost 20 years, and I've had pretty much the same three captains for 20 years, except for one promotion in there. That sort of tells you the possibilities that it may not work well. I was very fortunate to have three good captains. What happens if you have two that don't work with you? Take, for example, a new police commissioner comes in and you have, say, two out of three captains that don't want to go along with the policies. You know, you're trying to implement new things. You're trying to put in drug testing or educational values and stuff like that, and they fight you tooth and nail. You could be up against a real tough battle because there's really not much you can do. They're not on your team, in other words.
But it's with the same token, we can have a police commissioner come in that isn't the right police commissioner.
And you get rid of him.
Right, exactly.
Yours is my pleasure.
Right, but the point, you know, the other question I have is that, you know, is there an example that you can give me where this change, this change that's being presented right now would make it easier or not, excuse me, try to handcuff you in trying to discipline somebody? There are mechanisms in place to allow you to do that already, correct?
No, it's not, it's not an issue with discipline, no.
But you said earlier about, you know, being able to...
Oh, look, the captains, the captains.
Yeah, even the captains to discipline. You know, even though they're in the same union, they're in a position, in the past, to discipline subordinates. Have there been times when they've had to discipline subordinates and they weren't able to because of this position?
No, they...
Oh, I think it puts them in a terrible position. They do command discipline to these people that work for them, and they're in the same union as them. It puts the supervisor, you know, look, I...
What I'm hearing is a lot of assumptions, but I'm not hearing any fact. And that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to find an issue that has come up where this becomes necessary. I'm just trying to figure that out.
Let me put it as clearly as I can, I can put it. Your management team believes this is the right organization for the Police Department. We believe that the captain positions, Assistant Police Commissioner positions are management confidential positions, okay? The Council can agree, disagree with that, you're free to vote however you want. Ultimately, I can tell you, that is my strong belief based on the conversation I've had with our legal advisors, that if we do this and give the police management team a management capacity that they believe that they need, PERB will rule in our favor. I could be wrong. I could be wrong. PERB could say, no, they're not management confidential, they should stay in the union, and that's it, and then it's done. Things change, and this is, look, it's our recommendation.
Right, no, I understand. I was just trying to understand if there was an example of issues that have come up in the past that would make this, you know, require this to be done.
I can tell you, this has been a discussion with police management since I've been the manager. This has been...
Well, I've had a lot of experience with that in New York City. And those that didn't match up, that got a command, got bounced out of the command. The career was over. The police commissioner has the authority to give you a command and move you up the ranks, and he has a lot of latitude. And when you don't perform in that command, you're out. And you're a duty captain for the rest of your life unless you retire. So your career is pretty much over once you lose your command like that. I have no flexibility like that. If I have a person that's in the spot and really can't fit that spot, doesn't know how to deal with people, doesn't know how to deal with the managerial principles you want to do, you're stuck with them, okay? They take an exam that's a little more than the lieutenant's exam. It doesn't, and it's a lot of memorization. It doesn't show you the aptitude of the person. Is that person able to run an organization? Can a person manage, supervise, discipline, come up with ideas, make the agency grow? That's what you're looking for. You don't get that from a civil service exam.
By the way, it was our original intent to have PERB decide this first for us. But PERB has advised our legal counsel that this step has to be taken before they will hear the petition, so.
Okay.
That's, is that correct, Captain?
Councilor Rackman?
First of all, it's my understanding that there was a time when our captains were deputy commissioners, and that was, I think it was a number of years ago, but I think it was for about three or four years, and then it was reversed because it was not very effective. My other issue is, if I'm reading the city charter correctly, the deputy, the city manager has the ability to create the deputy commissioner position. It then says, "Any changes to the organization of the Police Department need to be done by the City Council, not by PERB, not by the Police Commissioner, but by the City Council." And I don't know that this is necessarily an issue that goes to PERB.
Oh, it's clearly...
No, it clearly has to go to PERB. I understand that, but I think after the Council approves the reorganization, not prior to that.
That's why...
Well, this is a budget. This is, this is a budget. That's the action that's required by Council.
Civil Service Commission has created the position. City Council has to fund the position.
That's why it's here.
Could I just ask for a response to Councilmember Rackman's point about this structure having been implemented previously? Is that correct?
It precedes both Pat and I.
It precedes, the only thing I got out of it that were, when the new police commissioner came in, he had six captains, I believe, a lot of dead wood, and he wanted to get rid of dead wood, so he created a position of deputy commissioner and put three of the captains he wanted into those positions and tried to force some of the others out.
I think what it indicates is, there was an organizational structure in place. The commissioner came in and recommended that the organizational structure change, and he was allowed to do it. And then another commissioner came in and wanted to change it back, and he was allowed to do it. I think that's the history.
Is that, is that in fact what happened?
I don't know. I can find out, but I think that's...
I believe they went from three deputy commissioners to one deputy commissioner and captains. But they lost in the, in the total, they had six captains at one point. Now we have three.
Do you have more on that?
I just have one more question. If you arrest someone at this point, do you arrest them as a police officer or do you arrest them as a citizen?
A police officer.
You do, okay.
Councilmember Fratell?
Yeah, a couple of questions. You know, one of the things that I find kind of ironic about this discussion, when I was on the school board, one of the problems was the senior management staff had tenure, and you couldn't remove them because they were guaranteed their jobs until they could remove, for instance, I would say, principals of schools. And what you're proposing, as I understand it, is to basically eliminate the tantamount of tenure as civil service protection. Is that really...
That's correct.
And I guess my question is this, I have two questions. One is, what is the net, 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 net bottom line effect on our budget if we approve this? Is it going to cost the taxpayers more? Is it going to cost them less? It'll have no effect? I'd like to hear that.
What you're approving tonight?
If we approve it tonight, it goes through...
There's no budgetary impact.
None whatsoever. But you said we pay a little bit less for retirement benefits.
Actually, if the retirement system decides to switch the...
So in the absence of a change in retirement system, there'll be absolutely no budgetary impact?
Well, going forward, it would probably be a savings in that non-represented positions are generally given increases less than uniform services. So probably would have a, an overall reduction in costs, minimal at best. I don't know what's going to happen. This group hasn't had a contract for three or four years, so I don't know what's going to happen there. But in those three, those three of those years, the non-reps got zeros.
Those three people will not have overtime as well.
My next question is...
I just want to be clear. I want to be clear because your question is, their compensation package right now gives them a salary plus overtime plus some other things. What is it?
Holiday pay, staff differential.
Whatever their total remuneration package is now is what it would be. It would just all be in the salary.
So as far as they're concerned, their compensation would not change at all?
As of now.
And, what do you mean? I want to get this clear, as of now.
Because eventually...
Other than, let me finish. Other than negotiated changes or increases that are passed along to them based upon negotiations with unions or otherwise, if nothing changes, if it's status quo now and four years from now, let's say hypothetically, would these individuals get paid the same, less or more than they would be paid now?
Here's the reason it's difficult to answer. And Kathleen would have to correct me if I'm wrong. Because the SOA has not had a contract with the city since 2009, I believe is the time, these positions served, these employees, if they're still here whenever those things get settled, serve, they're entitled to those.
I understand that. I'm saying, assuming that nobody ever gets any increase ever in their future employment pay, just assume that, would they by virtue of this position receive additional compensation?
Now, there's a good chance they'll end up getting less eventually over four years because, as the city manager said, if the union got a 3% raise, it's a good chance the non-reps would get two.
I understand. I'm just trying to talk from a position point of view, not from a contract point of view, whether they would get an automatic increase or any other longevity or seniority increase.
As non-reps, they're entitled to none of that.
I understand that. I understand that, okay. My next question, which is a more difficult question for you, Commissioner. There's a great number of gentlemen sitting in the back, as you probably know, breathing down your neck right now, talking about, who feel very strongly about this. And I've been contacted, and we've been bothered by emails, and I'd like you, I know it's not fair, but can you tell us, if you can, why there is such adamant opposition to this and what your response to that is?
I don't know. Alls I know is, if I were in the back, I know I would be one of the guys going to be a star trying to get that position if it came up. If I was a lieutenant, for example, and there was a deputy commissioner, assistant commissioner spotted up, I'd be the guy trying to shine to get it, if I wanted it. Maybe I don't want it. In other words, you're additioning in that rank now, sergeants, lieutenants, are additioning for those future spots. And they're showing the management, I'm a team player, I'm the guy you want on the team, I can do the job. And that's what you're looking for, someone to carry the ball. And I would, I would almost say, thank God, I don't have to memorize all that crap anymore.
Okay, let me say, let me add to what you said.
I don't have to study.
Let me add to what you said. Back before I proposed this, he's here, I met with the president of the SOA. I gave him the courtesy of calling him to my office, and I said, this is how we're looking to move forward. We believe it'll be handled at the PERB level at some point in time. I know they're going to oppose it. The SOA has a right to oppose it. After all, they're losing three positions in their unit. I would be surprised if they didn't oppose it. I won't comment on some of the attacks that have been thrown around and the misinformation that has been spewed, but I will tell you that they have every right to oppose it. They'll have a right to oppose it. If you do it, they can go to PERB and oppose it. They already have, they've already submitted, their attorneys have already submitted papers to PERB. So it's really, it's, in my opinion, it's the management staff of the city saying, this is what we think is best for the organization. Either you're going to agree with our recommendation or you don't. Ultimately, that's the question.
All right, just a few more questions. And I think that would create more movement in the ranks as opposed to what's going on now because captains now, in order to realize anything, have to stay to age 62.
Yeah, I want to get into that a little bit because there's been a lot of misinformation thrown around about how this will have people, as it stands now, you're in the police retirement system. When you work 20 years, your pension is capped until you get to 62, and then it goes up a little bit each year after that. That does not, in my opinion, give people a real incentive to stay with the organization because you could start as a police officer at 25, and you could move your way through the ranks, and at 45, your pension's capped. You've got to stay 17 years if you want to stay with us, become a captain, and get a pension benefit. The ERS system is different in that you get 2% a year, there's no 50% cap. So in my opinion, is what it is, that that is much more of an incentive to have people stay with the organization than to do 20 and out and be gone and to have to keep bringing people up through the organization. This idea that this is going to allow somebody to stay here until they're 85 years old, in my opinion, the folks that are, and I don't want to make this too personal because that's another bit of misinformation that's been thrown around, are much more likely to retire earlier if this happens than later.
Just one more point. So I understand this, this is not an all or nothing. It's almost a menu. You have, one issue is the elimination of the position from, because it's management confidential, and they still have to take a test. That's one possibility.
That's a possibility.
The other possibility is they don't go into the ERS and they stay in the police retirement, right?
That's a possibility.
So you could have several permutations. One is, the minimum you would have to get in order for this to succeed is to take them out of that, make it management confidential, but they still have to take the civil service exam. That's the minimum you would be asking for. Am I correct?
That's correct, but remember, we're not eliminating captains, they would just stay in here unfunded. They don't have to go back.
Okay. The second, if you got even more, would be that you would, and two or three of the same, you would also have them not required to take the civil service exam. And if they have served the will, well, the reason is, if they took the civil service exam, would they still serve at the option of the commissioner?
No.
No.
So they would have to take...
The one in free rule would be an effect.
Would apply, but they could still be removed at the will of the commissioner?
No.
No.
Oh, no. So what you're saying is, at a minimum, you would still have them in positions where they'd be guaranteed basically due process before you could remove them?
Right.
The second level, which would be a little higher, is that that would be limited, and you could remove them without having to go through the civil service process. And the third aspect of this is whether or not they would be subject to the police retirement or the employment retirement system.
That's correct.
Those are the three factors that we're dealing with here. To make it clear to the public and to everybody who's sitting here. So we're making a decision of this menu in various gradations to what extent you can get that. And the minimum is the change in the position, the management confidential, where they would be out of the union but still have the civil service protection, it could still be police retirement system.
Well, all you're doing tonight is allowing us to follow through with PERB to see if we're right in our petition or not. And at the end of the day, I will be honest and upfront, the least, the most difficult thing of the three things that we're trying to get would be the exempt position. That would probably be the most difficult thing to have.
One more question. Are you requesting that they be changed in the retirement system, or that's something that would be decided unilaterally or by the commission, by PERB itself? Is that something you're requesting, or is that something that the employees in the city would have to make that request? Okay, so the employee who gets promoted over this position, would that have to request whether in that particular retirement system?
The city would have to make the request with them.
Right, okay. Nothing further.
Councilmember Tarantino?
You go.
I had just one quick question before I forget it. Based upon what Councilman Fratell said, if it got, if this was approved by Council, Council then has no more involvement in the process that's done administratively from that point on, or would it have to come back to Council to determine if PERB gave you everything you wanted and allowed you to make them move into the other pension system, eliminated the testing, would Council still have say in any of that process, or would it be done administratively? In other words, is this the last line for the Council? Okay, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's the policy question.
Okay.
The rest of it is administrative, it's not policy.
Okay.
Commissioner, you presented, I think, two concerns that you felt was important to you. One was the fact that the captains were in the union with union employees, their subordinates.
Right.
And you said that that could be an issue regarding if there were disciplinary actions brought against subordinates. But how many times since has that happened, since you've been a commissioner?
I was anticipating that question.
Quite often.
Since 2004, there have been 54 cases of command discipline where a captain has brought command discipline to a lieutenant or sergeant, resulting in 47 days' lost leave. Whether, now, when command discipline's brought, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not up to the employee whether they want to challenge that and seek a hearing and go in that regard, but the captains initiate that command discipline.
The other concern, major concern you had was the fact that you want to be able to pick or select individuals, not from testing, but from what you felt would be the best. Now, if we go through PERB, that might be a moot point because if you have to take it, if they have to take a test, you've still got to pick from that list, correct?
I still do.
That's correct. If PERB decides that we don't have to go through testing, you could make...
State Civil Service Commission makes that decision.
All right, then you can pick who you want as being your...
Right.
Your awesome.
Question is, though, will you be required to always pick from the New York Police Department? Can you go outside the department? Can you go outside the city and pick somebody for your deputy commissioner?
Probably technically, but it's not what you're looking to do because you're looking for people to know the organization already and have shown it, you know?
But technically, I mean, if you're not here as a commissioner, we have a new commissioner, he can go outside the staff or outside the city.
Yeah, but it, it would defeat the whole purpose of what we're trying to do. Let me, maybe I can give you one good example. When my friend took over the Philadelphia Police Department, they wanted him to come in and make a lot of change. He came in, he could only pick one person from that whole organization. Now, here's what, the fourth or fifth largest police department in the country. Everyone was civil service, up to the top second person. He couldn't make any change. After almost two years, he packed it in frustrated because he had to deal with an organization that was against change, didn't want to do anything, and he couldn't do anything about it. He couldn't remove anyone, couldn't move anyone. He was locked in. And this organization here, I'm doing it for the best of the organization, for the future growth of the organization, because policing, and over the last 20 years, has become so much, so complex, so involved with new technologies and things like, you need thinkers. You need people that are going to move the organization and not just sit there and get a paycheck. All right?
I mean, at the end of the day, police captains are some of the highest compensated senior management positions we have in the organization. There's no doubt about that. All you've got to do is read the job spec, whether it's police captain, assistant police commissioner. You know, I, I don't see the big controversy other than the union not wanting to lose the three jobs, and that's what it's really about.
So, Councilman Rackman, then Councilman-- Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you--
I'm done.
Okay. Councilman Rackman? No? I thought you raised your hand. All right. Councilmember Fratell?
Yeah, one question, because I understand this. If, if under that menu, the only thing that we get, or you get, is the fact that they have become management confidential, but they still have to take the test, other than the fact that they're removed from the union, is there any other change?
Well, it depends if they go in the, if they go into the civilian union. That would be a plus.
Okay.
And that's, this, if we get what we want, the people that are auditioning for that job would be awarded more so than if they took a captain's exam. The three people that will hold that spot will probably be better off in the long run being assistant commissioners if they're looking to aspire up the ladder. The only thing is, they're not taking the exam. I'm picking the person that I--
No, no, no. I'm saying, you know, I'm saying, if, the only change, the only change in all the efforts is that it becomes management confidential but not still subject to a civil service exam. And the title changes, and they're no longer in SOA. Is there any other change that would occur other than what I just described?
No.
Okay.
But I think that's a benefit.
All right, I'm just asking. Councilman Rice?
How many lieutenants are there currently?
Ten.
And all 10 of those are on the list, have taken tests?
Yeah, some are about, they're not all around the captain's list, if there's a list, you know?
How many are on the captain's list?
I'm not sure. Maybe five, six, something.
And out of that, five or six you would have to take--
I have, pick one out of the top three. Now, if the person I'm looking at is five or six, I can't reach him. I'll never reach him. I may never get to that person because the list will expire, and the way the openings occur in the rank, it may be five years before another spot opens up.
When's the next test that's available?
I don't know because we haven't filled the spot, you know? They've taken exams, but there's no vacancy.
The test--
Every two years, every two years, we like to put out an exam, but it's a moot point because there's no vacancy.
But when will the list expire?
I have to look at the--
I have to get that from the Civil Service Commission. They're the ones that determine the list.
So, in theory, the list can expire, and a new round of testing will take place, and there could be a different order.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah.
We don't know that expiration date right now.
I don't know when the list was established, but I think it's like--
But once you have the list, you have, and if you have an opening, you have to fill it.
And you fill it pervadingly, pending a test.
So, we're talking about three spots for the assistant commissioner, right?
Right. Still the three captains.
In theory, you, if you're doing top three, you could get to number five.
Oh, you can.
If you--
You'll never--
You'll have three spots.
There have to be vacancies.
Huh?
There have to be three vacancies.
Well, if you appoint three assistant commissioners, that's three right there, isn't that not? Or, I'm confused about that.
If you have them on a list--
You're ignoring the captains who would likely fill the positions initially.
Do you have to, is that what this does? It takes the captains?
Right now, if there's a vacancy, we have to select from the list that exists for captains.
The actual captains.
Right. And if you had one vacancy, you'd have to pick out of one, two, or three.
Got you.
If you had two vacancies, you'd pick one.
I've only--
And you have the next top three, you gotta pick out of the next top three.
I've only made one appointment in 20 years, the captain.
That was based off the list.
I'm saying, all those captains' lists over 20 years, there's only been one opening.
Councilman Rice?
Not for right now.
Councilman Rackman, then Councilman Tarantino.
How many disciplinary hearings have there been in the last five years with captains and superior officers?
Well--
Not disciplinary command, command discipline. How many hearings have there actually been?
Those are hearings. The command discipline hearings, they have a hearing with the officer and negotiate a plea.
How many have actually then gone on to a hearing, to an actual--
To serious charges?
Yes.
A handful.
Handful being two?
Because most people settle for the penalty because if you, if you're losing the trial, it's double at least. That's the reason why you wouldn't, not normally, go ahead with a hearing. And the command discipline is not a permanent thing on your record. What we call charges and specifications is a much more serious thing. It's a permanent thing on your record.
So, basically, what has happened, I guess, since 2004, we're talking about 57 times that have resulted in 48 days lost. So, you're talking about, about seven or eight times a year, maybe?
Yeah, well--
And what, what would the range of violations have been? What could they be?
From dismissal to warned and admonished.
But what, for what actions?
Some of them are criminal. Some of them are bordering criminal. Some of them are very minor administrative, being late, not supervising properly, things like that.
I don't think, look--
There's a whole gamut.
I'm just--
There's a whole gamut--
Not the number of times, it's the fact that a person in the same union as his subordinate has to make the determination on command discipline. I don't, look, if the council is uncomfortable, I'm happy to bring our labor attorney in here to talk more about it, but, you know, if you read the petition before Purb, that's our case. I'm afraid to agree or disagree with it, but that's our case.
Councilman Tarantino?
Yes, I just want to, Councilman Fratell asked about the benefits or if there is any additional benefits. The captains are in the union now. Their pension falls under that, under the union contract.
That's correct.
So, when they get taken out of the union and they go into administrative, isn't there a benefit to their pension? Or that it stays the same?
If, if the state retirement system moves them into the employee retirements, there's no guarantee that that's going to happen.
So, the state can still keep them in the union, kind of?
The state retirement system will make the determination. That had to happen with the deputy commissioner. The deputy commissioner was promoted.
Well, what's your track record outside of this has happened? What has happened to other cities, other communities? Have they been moved into the--
I don't have any. I don't know.
Well, unfortunately, a lot of other cities have much better pension benefits than New Rochelle, and they don't even--
Well, the state, the state pensions, let, I mean, just so everybody understands, I've tried to be as upfront on this as I can. If they got into the ERS, their pension is enhanced. I'm not debating or denying that. The cost to the city is reduced. So, the state pension system's going to determine where they belong, not me.
Okay. One?
I've kind of deliberately held back and haven't been particularly engaged in this conversation up until now, but it seems to me that there's a lot of not seeing the forest for the trees, and this issue strikes me as larger and simpler than it appears to be based on this conversation. The civil service law is a great thing for the most part, even though we complain about it a lot. It ensures a minimal level of quality and merit among people who are hired to do the public's business. It prevents abuses in the promotional process and the removal process by establishing strict and clear standards that organizations need to adhere to. And when it comes to the general composition of our workforce, there's no question in my mind that the civil service process and the civil service law has enhanced the nature of public employment. But when you reach the management level, the standards and the costs and benefits shift because in order to hold managers accountable for their performance, you have to have the capacity to hire them or fire them without being constrained by rules that not, may